Okay.
Pictures.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council regular session agenda for Tuesday, October 24th at seven oh two here in the council chambers. Go ahead and join me for saying the pledge of allegiance.
On the camera, it always looks like you go off camera.
All right. Good evening and welcome to our city council meeting tonight. Welcome to all those who are here in in the chambers, in the hallway, and of course, I'm watching online live or at another point. And tonight we have some ceremonial items to begin with. So item A is ceremonial swearing in of Patrol Officer Matthew Ortwin. And I believe we have Police Department will go ahead and come forward.
The author can come on in and support if you'd like, family, not in.
All right, come on. We'll begin with the oath of office. Can you repeat after me? I, Matthew Ortwin,
I, Matthew Ortwin.
swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and of Oregon.
Swear that I will support the Constitution and laws, Oregon.
And yet of the United States and Oregon. And the Charter and ordinances.
And Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of North Bend.
Of the City of North Bend.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
Duties of a police officer.
For the City of North Bend.
For the City of North Bend.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a signing right here. Oh.
Yeah, one person with an house.
All right.
Well, first off, I want to thank all of Matt's family that showed up tonight. Good showing some familiar faces and familiar officers in the group there too. Our sister city. Matt is a a local person and spent a little time in the US Coast Guard, came back, became certified at Florence Police Department and we were lucky enough to get a hold of him and bring him back here. So this is a really a great opportunity. I feel for Matt, but particularly for the North Bend Police Department and the City of North Bend. For those of you who aren't aware, finding certified officers and tracking them is very difficult. And that says two things for sure. One, that our city has a lot to offer and definitely our police department and we're really looking forward to you and your career here. And I hope that's a really a long one for sure. And welcome to our van.
So we'll ring the clock down for a picture and I actually shared with Matt in the hallway that I babysat him as a little baby. So really was really deep. Yes. Thank you. Yeah, how are you looking?
See Bernie, I got a fire going on. If I had a police going on, I'd have it in a little puzzle in the gaps. It's the gaps. All right, ready? All right, everybody, thank you. Stay there. Bring the chief and that. There's a photo. Well, just the answer, every side. All right, let's tuck it in a little where you do the shoulders a little so you tuck it in. All right, ready? Good to see you out there, Mike. That long ago, you were doing the same thing here. Kind of proud for the promotion, sir. Excellent. Now it's your opportunity for any family members you want to have come up if they want to be in a photo. Anybody else? Don't be shy. All right. All right, ready? Thank you.
All right, go ahead and head on to the agenda here. Wait for the room to settle for a moment. We do have another five year, another ceremonial item, and this is our five years of service for Mr. Ralph Dunham, our Public Works Director. Can I be the photo taker in this one for you?
Thank you. And you may have got to say where I am, Bradley. Yeah. We'll take photos with the council.
Okay, I'll get one.
Um, so this is the number one question that comes out. Regarding Ralph. Don't want to hear this. Yes. Folks have tuned in from 23 countries to watch his presentation. But Ralph, the number one question that comes up is, what it means I've been here five years? And in fact, it's hard for me to truly believe that it's been five years, but then when I explain to folks, well, Ralph has a lot of history. And he has accomplished a lot. In fact, back in the day, he was the Deputy Superintendent Director of the Airport. And so he has run a lot of things. And so he previously worked for the city but left. And so I honestly will say, I didn't actually, I thought you'd been here forever. And so when this came up, I'm like, Macy, is this an error? Because if you know Ralph, Ralph knows the city frontwards, backwards, sideways, and he probably has a compass in his jacket or his pocket. And can pull it out. Because he does know everything. We rely on Ralph. In fact, I think I had mentioned Ralph once, Mike, I wish I had your delivery skills. Because you can sit there and just say something in a very calming way and then tell you, and it's only, you know, $480,000. And the gavel goes down there, prove it. Ralph manages half of the city. Half of the city. When you think about it, it's the streets division. The wastewater division. He's got public works. He's got planning, zoning, all of that. So he actually has under him like half of the city. And he's got like half the budget. In fact, almost all of his funds are restricted. So I try to pout up to him. It doesn't do any good. He explains to me, I can only use it for the intended purposes. Ralph is someone that is a department head. You actually sleep at night and you appreciate that when he comes to the table and says he does due diligence, he's done it. And I'll come back sometimes like, hey, can we take another look at this? And he knows like the archives. He'll pull out things. His institutional memory as running an engineering company is incredible. He'll sit down and write all of the big documents, RFPs, everything. He gets in the minutia. And still somehow or another still manages to get me his city administrator report generally on time. And so for the head, I say, thank you, Ralph. You have just been a blessing for city administrator to come in. I'm at my three years. You're at your five years. I would have thought you were like 20, 25, 30. I mean, that's a lot of institutional knowledge and his, his staff loves him. They have a great working relationship. They have a great respect for him. They work really, really hard for Ralph. And so for that, thank you on your five year anniversary of the city. How total amount is it when you go back? Cause you actually, actually worked for that other city too.
I've got seventeen years of public works experience, but also was with fire department for, we better ask my wife, 27, I think. So there's some knowledge there and working in private industry, actually give jobs for the city in North Bend. So never totally away from the city. My home. I had to move into town in nineteen eighty four. Before when I went to work here, because that was the residency department, residency department, because I lived out north of town. But no care for that, so I enjoyed it. And the whole thing on your staff as well makes you manager. Good, that's you're giving accolades to me for my staff. It's easy to manage people. So you're good worker, not simple. Congratulations.
I understand that your photo shows up in the newspaper. Everyone in the fire department gets ice cream and you have to buy. All right, let's broadcast this then.
Here's all the people who know who I am.
It, in fact, we were just in the hallway chatting with the woman. She's like, oh yeah, I know Ralph. We went to school together. It's like, everybody knows Ralph.
Yeah, everyone's been with you, Ralph.
Beth, I think it was Beth Williams, I think. Yeah, all right, ready? All right, here we go. Thank you.
Here when we did the pool, it was scary enough and having Ralph there, I think, gave everybody confidence.
All right, so. Well, that goes ahead and takes us to item three, which is our consent calendar. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
I move, we took the consent counter at present.
I heard a first from Counselor Gall, a second from Counselor Hamilton. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes?
I'm pulling the striping matter off the consent counter.
Okay, would you, then are we gonna, where shall we add that on the agenda?
I'm sorry, where are we with motions?
Um, so we had a first and a second.
Yeah, so you already have a motion in play. You can't pull it. You can consult with your parliamentarian, but you have a existing motion. So you, you're in play for discussion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we had a first and a second. We're in discussion. Counselor Nordoff has asked to pull the items, so that can't be part of the discussion?
When is, when is a person supposed to pull the item? I guess that's the question.
Okay.
Because it's not been made clear.
Yeah, did you?
We actually asked during last night's meeting, which is usually appropriate for the agenda. And then you could have asked for the chair's attention prior to her accepting. And so when she went and asked for the will of council, that would have meant appropriate time to say, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull an item for the consent counter.
Yeah.
But again, you have your city attorney. Do we have our city attorney?
We do have, yep, we have our city attorney online. Yeah.
I am going through the the rules here. We do have a motion and a second, so now would be time for the discussion. But give me a moment. We'll see if we can get some clarity here. So yeah, so we rule in your rules on the consent calendar, any member of the council can remove an item from the consent agenda by voice request prior to the vote to adopt the consent agenda. Any matter removed from the consent agenda will be discussed and considered as an action item at the meeting. And no vote.
Yeah. Or sorry, Mr. Wolf, is so is the, is the time then to do that normally during the work session when we go through the agenda?
That would be one time, but your, your rules state that it can be done at any time prior to the vote.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I think it's timely and I think that it's been pulled.
Okay. So do we?
Move that to a, to its own item.
Would it be appropriate to then during the discussion? Ask, have questions about why it's being pulled or just move it to a separate item? Because we, would that be one way to do it as well?
Yeah, I suppose that would be fine. There, there's no specific rule on that. So if, if Counselor Nordoff could precisely state why that, that would be fine. If, if not, you can move it on to the, to its own agenda.
Okay. Did you want to take the opportunity to say why you wanted to pull it? No. Okay. So we'll go ahead and
You can have a amended motion by whoever just made the previous motion. Have the consent counter approved as presented with the exception of item C.
So we had a, we had a first from, I believe it was Counselor Gall.
Yeah, I like my first motion.
You like the first motion, did you?
Uh, I guess I'm gonna make a another motion that we're gonna accept the consent counter with item A and item B and not C.
Okay. I heard a first from Counselor Gall and a second, or the amended motion with Counselor Gall and the second from Counselor Hamilton that will go ahead and accept the consent calendar as with item A, B, but not C. Okay? All right, so that is our first and our second. And then any further discussion? And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Number four, so did we want to go ahead and move the, that, where do we want to put that on the?
We have to do it immediately after the consent counter.
All right.
Per your rules.
So that'll go ahead and then we've got, I guess we'll call that three kind of.
We'll just call it three A or three dash one or something.
Three dash one. Okay, three dash one. And so Counselor Nordoff, you pulled the the striping from the consent agenda and wanted to discuss it now.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Before, again, it's a Robert's or the border thing. So you have council rules, but you have Robert's or, you have to entertain a motion to entertain discussion.
So I will, is there a motion for discussion? So wait, so I'm going to entertain a motion for item three dash one.
The will of the council on this item.
For the will of the council on this item.
Yes.
Okay. So is, yes, so you'll make that much. Okay.
I move to approve item three dash one. And then there's a second, and then there's discussion. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, so.
That is your motion.
With, with, let's, let's be precise this. I'm not used to this either. Okay, I would move to approve item three dash one with the addition of signage, on-street painted signage at the intersection of Union and Florida, because people coming down Union do not.
So we had to just have the motion. So I'm gonna, I'm, I'm attorney, please, can you jump in here?
So Madam Mayor, she is appropriate to make her motion. If she does not get a second, it fails, and then you go to the will of council.
Okay, so city recorder, did you catch what the motion was?
It would be approving item three dash one with the addition of signage on street cane.
Okay.
And at the intersection, Union and Florida, and then I got a yield sign.
Okay, is there, so that is the motion. Is there a second from the council?
I, I
I, I, we have the motion on the floor. I'm asking if there's a second. I'm not hearing a second from the council, so then the motion would fail. And now we would have discussion on them.
Uh, now you can entertain a subsequent motion. If there's no motion, uh, you would move on to your next agenda item.
Okay. So I apologize, I got lost there for a second. So the, so the motion failed. And now the so the consent can
So I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, let me walk you through this, because I understand this is
This is confusing.
So there was a motion on the floor. It failed to receive a second. So at this point, as chair, you can ask, what is the will of the council? A member of the council can make a subsequent motion.
Okay.
If there is no subsequent motion, you move on to the next agenda.
Would the subsequent motion have anything to do with
It could be approval.
Approval of item C since we removed it. So.
I want to move that we approve item C as presented from the compact.
Okay, I hear a motion from Counselor Gall. A second from Counselor Hamilton to approve items, um, item C that had been removed from the packet to approve it for I, the motion to, I hear a motion to approve the item.
As presented.
As presented. Okay, that is the motion. And there is a second, and is there a discussion?
We really need a yield sign so people won't get hit coming around Florida at the diamond, because people do not yield. They do not think they have to. The only ones who yield are the people with CDLS. Because they watch. If the street is 55 feet wide, the yield sign is way over on the perimeter and people are booking on Union approaching because they're on their way home across the bridge. And everyone in the Mead, Monroe, McPherson area uses Florida to access Highway 101, whether going north or going south. And I understand that the traffic counts may have diminished, but my last awareness of traffic counts was 2,500 cars a day from the state highway through this neighborhood, back to the state highway, and everybody in that neighborhood uses Florida to get to Highway 101. Each and every one of them stands a good chance of being hit at certain times of the day, because the people using the bypass, state highway traffic, they believe they have the right of way. And I have had lights flashed at me when I did not yield to a driver. She flashed her lights out of me. The light was red. I went back and told her she did not have the right of way. But it's, it's an ongoing problem. And the city made this change, in my opinion, it's the city's responsibility to make it safer for the local people to use that as their interior neighborhood street. Am I being clear on this? I hope I'm being clear on this, because the city made the change that puts the drivers in my neighborhood in a, in a very difficult situation. And I'm sorry if, if you don't relate to it. But it's a problem and it's not going away.
Okay, we had a first and a second and, and the discussion, so I'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor of approving item C, annual striping of city streets, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now that takes us to public comments. And I believe Macy, you said that there's one person online. And no, I don't believe we have anybody here in person to speak. So all right, so I see we have a Mr. Tim Neal, who just want to say thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings and each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon, Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking notes or any action if needed. So Mr. Neal, I see that we've got you online. We're gonna go ahead and unmute you. When you begin speaking, our city recorder will go ahead and start the timer. And it looks like you're walking right now. Can you hear us? Okay. All right. Okay. All right.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. So if you're able to catch that, we'll go ahead and start the timer.
Okay, so hello, my name is Tim Neal and this is my son, my son David Neal. He is on the BAT 11U team. Uh, the Bay Area, the Bay Area travel team. And we are looking for donations, so we are raising money about, about 12,000, which will cover their, their termative fees and, and stuff like that, and the jerseys and, and the equipment. Um, so the 11U consists of kids 11 and younger. Anyway, so we wanted to use the North Bend Community Building on December 10th to do a rummage sale so we can um, get you know, donations and, and money to support their travel team. So we are appealing the, the, the council to see if y'all wanted to donate that, that building on December 10th.
All right, thank you for your comments. Was there anything else?
No, that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Participated in local government. Okay. All right, if that is the end of the public comments this evening, then we'll go ahead and move on to there is one. The items that I have, is this for the public hearing or for the public comments? Okay. No, that's the public. Okay, the next item that we have is Julia Claybold on 2164 State Street. And this is, the public comments is for the Kuzbay Estuary policymaking procedures. And it says, good evening, my name is Julia Claybold. I am a homeowner who resides in North Bend. First, I'd like to take the time to thank the panel members for their dedication and generous gift of their time committed to the um, arduous task of updating this 40-year-old 1983 Kuzbay Estuary Management Plan, the KABAM. It is extremely important that the development and any new policies reflect the diverse needs of our community members who all depend on a healthy bay for our Depend on a healthy bay for our current and future survival. How is the city ensuring that they are representing the views of their constituents before making new policies? Many residents work along our, many residents work long hours trying to survive. They just do not have time. To attend council meetings, this doesn't mean that they do not have concerns or opinions regarding new proposed policies that impact their quality of life. More than seventy five percent of residents are not attending or watching their local YouTube government meetings. Only ten percent, um, ten residents out of ten thousand residents are able to speak. Once a month for a total of three minutes to address the city council about their concerns. Often no response or resolution is even provided to the residents as they attend the meetings. The committee, community is being left out of being able to participate in the development of their own policies and governing and govern their society. And the concerns they bring forth are going to um are going and addressed. We have to, excuse me, modernize. For transparency purposes, the way local government is demonstrating a good faith. Effort to be inclusive in the way it communicates, exchanges ideas and collects data from residents' views on. Proposed policies, viewing verifiable data from public opinion polls is the only way our elected leaders would have. Information needed to vote correctly on new policies that represent their constituents' views. Transparency inclusion of the development of new policies that include the residents viewpoints can only happen with the dedication of local government officials being. Uh, willing to modernize their city website platform to allow meaningful communication between the residents and their elected official. The public does not want to feel left out or ignored, we want our local government to represent our opinions when creating new policies and. Respond back with solutions to community concerns. There has to be a commitment to modernize the way the city is operating to enable um more community members to be able to participate in all phases. Of public policymaking decisions that impact our lives. Alright. And that is the end of the. Public comments to be read into the record, thank you. Okay. Alright. So let's see. That takes us to number six, which is our public hearing ordinance two zero seven zero. And ordnancy and adopting the twenty twenty three Kuzbay Estuary Management Plan as part of the city of North Bend's comprehensive land use. Plan, and I believe Derek, our city planner is coming forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to collect additional information on the CABM uh update phase one for tonight's public hearing. Um, to start off with, I'd like to address Counselor Nodoff's question uh regarding tide gates from last night. Um, so the Ku- the Kuz County had conducted a preliminary survey of existing tide gate infrastructure. And Noah had made comment regarding the use of tide gates as head of tide demarcation. But no changes to this, no changes to this phase have been conducted as it's outside of the scope of phase one. Um, after taking the opportunity to confer with my counterparts at the city of Kuz Bay and Kuz County. We've agreed that it'd be in the best interest of this amendment and thereby the Kuz Bay Estuary Management Plan. To take a step back and make some clarifications with regard to the roles and responsibilities of the jurisdictions, stakeholders, our community partners, and the general public. Due to this staff is asking that the council motions to continue this public hearing to the November twenty eighth meeting. This will allow staff additional time to work with the other jurisdictions in order to fully consider the testimony provided and the comments received. As part of this continuation, we're asking that a uh joint special work session be convened November ninth at six P M. In the Kuz Bay Council chambers so that we can continue, so that we can ensure that all legislative bodies are on the same page. Prior to the public hearing on November twenty eighth. Um, and with that, that is what I have for you this evening regarding this amendment. And I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them, um, and we do have Meg Reed um online as well, if you have questions about the.
Okay.
Content.
Counsel, uh, is there any questions for Meg Reed or city planner? Counselor Nodoff?
Will the staff then be at the work session on the ninth?
Absolutely.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so. So. Then we are striking number six.
Um, I would ask that we accept any public testimony that's um.
Or number five, sorry, the, yes.
I I would ask that we receive public testimony so that can inform our.
Gotcha, so we'll still conduct the public hearing. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Alright, thank you, Madam Mayor.
And um I see we still have our attorney online. Here. So we'll go ahead and begin the public hearing for ordinance two zero seven zero, Mister Wolf.
Do you have a question?
Hmm, okay, this is the time for a public hearing on ordinance two zero seven zero. And ordinance adopting the two zero, the twenty twenty three Kuzbay Estuary Management Plan as part of. The city of North Bend's comprehensive land use plan. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the hearing. I'm going to ask the counselors, are there any conflicts of interest or? Any ex parte contacts to report? Will the staff please uh present the report?
So Madam Mayor, as discussed, um. You know, we're we're seeking a motion to continue this public hearing to November twenty eighth. Um, and approve a special work session November ninth. With uh jointly with the city of Kuz Bay and uh Kuz County. But before you tonight is a proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan that would. Bring into sync the Kuz County and Ku- city of Kuz Bay and city of North Bend altogether um under the same plan. And. Uh, yeah, the changes that were made were to increase the plan's usability, correcting typos and script errors, updating agency names. And to pull on local amendments to maintain estuary inconsistency. Um, during the review process, but. Comments were solicited from state and federal agents. Agencies as well as from stakeholders in the general public. And the majority of comments received have either been incorporated or tabled for future phases of the update. And so what we're asking. Again, is a continuation of that process.
Okay. Alright, well then I will go ahead now and open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There is a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. So. Is there any? Okay, so then to our city reporter. Um. I'll read this one into the record.
That one is written, so it will be put into the record.
Okay. Okay, okay, so we have that, and then is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance two zero seven zero? And I don't, nobody else is online. So are we? And.
So now would be. Against.
Yes, so just to clarify, we're asking if there is anybody in the audience here, if they're wishing to speak in favor of ordinance two zero seven zero.
Correct.
And I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand. Okay. In favor of.
In favor.
Okay. And I see we have a person here online, this is Philip Johnson, hi Philip, are you able to hear us okay?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yeah, are you here to speak in favor of ordinance two zero seven zero?
Yes, very briefly, if I may.
Yeah, we'll go in, when you begin speaking, our city recorder will start the timer and you'll have three minutes, okay?
Yes, um. My name is Philip Johnson, uh, I am the Conservation Director of the Oregon Shores Conservation Coalition, which is officially headquartered in Kuz Bay. Um, our land use coordinator Annie Merrill spoke to you last night. Um, and with delivering the basic message we we wanted to deliver, but that wasn't on the record, so just very briefly, just to summarize the points she made. So they'll be part of this hearing. Um, uh, first point is simply that that the phase one of the Kuz Bay Estuary Management Plan update is really necessary. A lot of good work has gone into it, um, it uh uh provides a good basis. For a more comprehensive planning that's really needed for the estuary, so it's it's a great step, but we want it to be clear that it needs. It's a first step, and there really needs to be a phase two, so. We urge that um the uh phase one. Uh, include within it a commitment to uh proceed with the uh phase two that'll address larger concerns such as climate resilience. Um, restoration, water quality, things like that. Um, we've urged that the um. Also be included in phase one, be a commitment to create a citizen advisory committee that be very representative of the community. And uh we've submitted written testimony uh outlining the uh components of that that committee. The one thing is in the resolution that's been created by the planning commission, they did not actually mention conservation groups. And we feel that that is a constituency that has a lot to offer, so we do ask that that group be sort of enumerated among the groups. We be part of the citizen advisory committee, and we also strongly suggest a technical advisory committee. That will assist with updating the maps and other more technical aspects. And finally, um, a concern, and it's really the reason why things are being delayed by the three jurisdictions. Is to clarify exactly the language concerning both the port and the tribes and their role in it. And we strongly urge, and it's just a matter of law, that the port. Uh, was which was erroneously referred to as a co-manager, uh, that that's inappropriate language. The port is not on an equal level with the three local jurisdictions who are the only decision makers when it comes to the to the plan. And on the other hand, the tribe, which is also tribes, which also should not be called co-managers. But have a very different relationship to the whole process, and we urge that it be clarified that their um their status as sovereign nations be. Um, worked into the fabric of the of the plan, especially of the planning process going forward with phase two. So those are just the key points that Annie made last night, and we've made and written comments, I just wanted to uh get those points on the record, thanks very much.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright. So that was if anyone was speaking in favor of, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Of ordinance two zero seven zero. Okay. So if there's no one wishing to speak in opposition on in chambers or online, then I will go ahead and now close. The public testimony portion of the hearing. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for the staff? Counselor Nodoff?
After we have the November ninth meeting and the November twenty eighth meeting, are we going to have another public hearing on the amendments?
Let's go ahead and look to our city planner here of what the timeline would be.
Yes, so what what we would be seeking is to have a joint work session on November ninth. With everybody and all get on the same page. Um, and then reconvene November twenty eighth for a public hearing and subsequent adoption if the council wills it.
Okay, alright. Okay, so.
And and uh for clarification, city planner, do are are you looking for a motion from the council? To set this hearing over? Or or what what are you looking for from the city council?
Uh, yes, sir, I'm looking for a motion to continue.
I'm. Rather than a motion to to adopt the ordinance, which would be the typical process after the public hearing, Madam Mayor. So that that was where my clarification came in.
Right, so let's go ahead and take a moment here to take a look at this. Um.
So the way I see it is we make the right motion at the end of the uh. Public hearing, then that will take care of number six, if we wouldn't even visit that.
But are we, are we keeping the public hearing open until?
So we are currently in the middle of the public hearing, so would I, the order events, so we need to close the pub- pub- public hearing. And then after we um close the public hearing, what is the suggested motion?
So Madam Mayor, the recommendation of staff, if I understand correctly, is we're not going to move forward on the ordinance at this time.
Okay.
Um, we are going to, and so um, uh, you can uh uh entertain a motion uh to remove. That agenda item or um simply. Take no action, um, it's your agenda at this point, so staff cannot remove it.
So, but the first thing we need to do is officially close the public hearing, right? So um, I'm not hearing any more questions about the content um of um ordinance two zero seven zero, we've heard from our city planner. If there's no further discussion, I will go ahead and officially close the public hearing. That would then take us to item six, which is ordinance um two zero seven zero. And at this time, I'm, I would see it best fit just to strike the item from the agenda. Um, but would I need a motion to do that?
It's your meeting, but since you're in a meeting, I believe that you actually. Get the council's consensus to remove it.
Okay, or we could, um, how about this, this might be easiest.
I I move to table the ordinance to November twenty eight.
Do we want the specific times in there or just do we take no action, I would?
There's a council rule on tabling.
Okay.
The way he made it sound is we need to, and I think. Now Schultz can come up with it greatly. Uh, and to make a motion to uh. Continue the public hearing and have another public hearing on the twenty eighth of.
Well, so here, how about this, number six is ordinance two zero seven zero, my suggested motion would be to take no action on this item at this time. I would feel like that would be the easiest, and then the dates of everything.
Believe so, because staff, when appropriate, will put it back on a subsequent agenda.
What if there was?
Postpone that um by your council rules, it has to be on the immediate next meeting.
So I don't think it's tabling or postponing, but my my suggested, I would entertain a motion of ordinance two zero seven zero or agenda item six. To take no action, oh, to take no action at this time.
I'll make a motion. Oh, for ordinance two zero seven zero, take no action this.
I heard a first from Counselor Hamilton, second from Counselor Schultz, any questions? We'll hear from you further, that's what I'm, my comment, okay, so I heard a first and a second, all in favor of. Um, number six agenda item ordinance two zero seven zero to take no action at this time, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Number seven then is. Um. Number seven is resolution number three three four one, a resolution of the city of North Bend. Um. Evidence and commitment to coordinating with Kuz County and city of Kuz Bay to pursue funding to complete a comprehensive update of the estuary plan. Is that a no action item at this time?
Um, Madam Mayor, I think that that's well of the council, we can go either way on it, um, it does not affect the amendment.
Move it forward.
Okay, so um I would entertain a motion to take no action for item seven.
I'll make a motion to take no action for.
Okay, heard a first from Counselor Hamilton and a second from Counselor Gall, any discussion? All in favor of resolution number three three four one to take no action at this time, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight on the agenda, or number eight is intergovernmental agreement between the city of North Bend and the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency. Relating to services to be provided by the city of North Bend, we had a discussion about this last night during our work session, I see our finance director has joined us at the table.
Yes, thank you, um, Madam Mayor, uh, members of the council, we're uh seeking approval of an intergovernmental agreement. Uh, between the city of North Bend and the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency. Um, to provide uh this agreement um outlines uh and details the administrative services. Um, that the city uh provides to um the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency. Um. Many of the the services um that are outlined in it are already being performed. This simply clarifies it on both sides, and I will note that the city and the urban renewal agency are two separate legal entities. And so um it would have to be adopted or or approved for both.
Okay, I move we uh adopt the inter- inter-governmental agreement between the city of North Bend and the North Bend Urban Renewal.
Okay.
Second.
First from Counselor Gall, second from Counselor Nodoff, um, any discussion? All in favor of um the. Uh, recommended the of the motion of the intergovernmental agreement between the city of North Bend and the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency relating to services to be provided by the city of North Bend. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine um was discussed last night during the work session, this is the architectural proposal for library restoration project phase two. Is there a motion from the council?
I move to approve the fee proposal from Robinson. Sher- Sherwood Architects.
Hmm. Robinson Sherwood Architects, okay. Is there, I heard a first from Counselor Schultz, is a second from Counselor Hamilton, do you have any discussion? All in favor of the um. Uh, motion to approve the, uh, what was it again?
You propose, you propose, proposal from Robbins.
The proposal.
Robinson Sherwood Architects.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, number ten was any action resulting from executive session, we did not have any action of to report. Um, and number eleven is our city administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, a couple uh highlights. Um, staff is working through uh some facilitated processes uh as we look through code. Um, this actually came to uh realize. Um, this actually came to realization when we did the circus uh, event. And so there's actually administrative processes um, that uh, just for whatever reason have always gone to the council and they're not actually required nor need to. Um, the council is um, also fulfills a judiciary period process, and so you're the right of appeal. And so uh, we are working on processes moving forward that all OLCC um, and um, otherwise event permits will actually be handed administratively through my office. Um, and won't clutter your agenda unless they are appealed to the council. Also, uh, this weekend, there's the candy crawl, uh, big event downtown. Uh, it is all advertised on our um, uh, Facebook page or website. Uh, we also are partnering with the Liberty Theater for uh, the movie. And so it's um, all free, lots of great candy. And I'd be remiss if I um, didn't say that um, uh, the um oh, weather gods or whatever you want to call them, mother nature cooperated with us because um, everybody uh, was uh giggling about us and doing the Ring of Fire revelry uh, during the eclipse. But I will tell you that those clouds parted just as the eclipse was occurring. And so for all of us, we got to see it. Uh, it was a great long day of uh, bands, food trucks. Um, in fact, some of the vendors said that they have done better here than they had some other local events. And so uh, we were very, very thrilled. We actually had host in uh, town. Uh, visitors from as far away as Utah, Washington, and throughout Oregon. So uh, we actually did attract a nice crowd. Now, using some AI technology, um, we had just over five hundred folks attend. Uh, we actually had a time elapsed. And so using AI technology, we were actually able to identify and count everyone who attended the event that was within the camera stream. Um, open house recap. Um, we had over four hundred folks come uh, to the fire department. They had a great open house. Uh, it was always great to see um, the kids um, uh, playing with fire hoses and jumping up and down on a the uh, uh uh, blow up uh, devices and eating hot dogs. Um, and more importantly, um, talking about fire safety. And so um, uh, we had two simultaneous events because uh, we also had the sip and stroll going on at the same time, and they just had over two hundred at that event. Um, so in fact, some folks showed up at the fire department with their wine glasses in hand. Um, and were surprised that they didn't get filled with anything. Um, but they were offered hot dogs. Um, and so of course, um, uh, they did a Miss Flame Week. And so uh, that was a very, very touching for number reasons. Um, there's a memorable moment um, when the football games halftime show, uh, they escorted uh, to the fifty yard line. Um, our first brave firefighters. Um, and um, Lindsey Jones was crowned Miss Flame uh, by our mascot, Sparky. Um, and so uh, we had ambassadors of the fire department there. Um, and so always a great little event. And I'm proud to say that Officer um, Sosby in the Police Department has now been certified as a firearms instructor. So um, uh, it's great to have another instructor in house. And last but not least, um, the talk of the town is Oak Street paving. Uh, we appreciate the public's patience while uh, we worked with um, uh, the timing of the stoplight there. Um, and so a lot of rerouting, but uh, folks uh, seem happy with that. The report's online as always, and um, I appreciate the uh, time given. Respect to you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate those. Those are very informative. Um, all right. And is there for committee reports? Um, know that we had some discussion during the council session last night with the special events committee. And we um, had talked about that there was a recommendation from the special events committee to move forward with a July jubilee um, for twenty twenty four. So I think we'll be looking for um, that to be on the next council meeting. Um, and so that was our discussion. I don't know if Mr. Or councillor Hamilton has anything to add about that?
Uh, no, it's uh, gonna be an exciting time, and I hope more citizens get involved with the community and come on out and cheer support or volunteer and let's uh, have a good twenty twenty four.
Yeah, okay. Um, any other? So um, Mr. Milleniron and I sit on the homeless response committee. I don't know if we wanted to highlight a couple of things from our previous meeting that we had.
Um, we're anticipating a press release coming out tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, so I will respect our partners. Um, there has been some movement in the public on the homeless um, side. Um, but um, I try not to get out ahead of our partners. And so uh, the county took action today. The homeless task force took action on Wednesday. Um, but I would encourage folks, uh, the council will get a copy of the press release when it's released from the Salvation Army. Um, but um, they're waiting for it to be approved by their Portland counterpart. And when it is, um, we'll post it on our website. Um, I do know that um, the news media covered today's um uh, board of commissioners meeting, and um, that was for an expenditure of four hundred and eighty thousand out of the home uh, House Bill forty one twenty three money um, for um, eight uh, tiny homes. Um, that we will house families on the Salvation Army property. Um, but um, I don't want to say any more than what was um, discussed today and sort of trump everybody.
Okay, all right. So stay tuned for more on that. If there is no further um, committee reports, we'll go ahead and move to council comments. So. Pat, councillor Pat Gaul, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Well, yeah, uh, David took on on the fire department's deal there. Uh, I only had one comment from the Miss Flame event. Uh, and I, by the way, I always wanted to be Mr. Flame, but uh, that uh, bring back the football, throw the footballs into the audience. I guess Brownie, if you need a little coin to buy some footballs, I'll help you out next year. Yeah. Okay, and and um, and that, it's all positive thing. Uh, it's that the people just go nuts when the fire truck goes around the the field and and the Miss Flame gals are in there and uh, it 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 is a really good thing. And and we used to, we used to be able to do a lot of things during halftime, but now there's just not enough time. So uh, we've burnt buildings down, we jumped off the grandstands, we jumped off of fifty foot ladder into a the net. Uh, we we did it all way back when, and there just isn't enough time. But these guys do a great job with Miss Flame. But then Friday night's deal, you know, I you know, I want to compliment the fire department, not only Brown, all the staff, all the volunteers. They had kids doing stuff that I wouldn't have thought, you know, and next thing they might have a water bowl competition or something. But they had kids playing, you know, squirting fire hoes and and it it was, it was a really good event. And you know, you kind of got a cocked, cappy audience because, you know, we really can't have too much from the police department or, you know, open house at Ralph's uh, treatment plant. That wouldn't go over very good, you know? Uh, he does have a kind of cappy audience, but they do a really, really good job. Uh, thank you. Yeah.
Right. Councillor Schultz?
Um, I also wanted to kind of piggyback off that and say that uh, the Main Street um, sip and stroll was great. And I did go to that. And then I ended up at the fire station, not asking for wine. Taking a ride around on a fire truck, which was awesome. Um, so that was fun to participate in. Um, and then also just bringing up the fact that this Friday is homecoming at North Bend. So the homecoming football game and then the homecoming dances on Saturday.
Who are they playing?
I don't know.
Okay.
They're playing Henley.
Okay.
It's gonna be a, yeah.
For us?
No. Go ahead.
Okay, councillor Nordoff.
Okay, um, really enjoyed uh, the Oregon Cities Conference up in Eugene. There, there's just so much to take part in and to see. And the vendors are there. There's all sorts of hardware and interesting things to look at. The one that I really liked was the uh, the display on the the speed monitor where you put it by the side of the road and it says what the speed's supposed to be and what the vehicles, you know, approaching vehicle's speed is. And I am wondering if we could ask Public Works to put a couple of those on Virginia, because people are doing forty, forty-five on Virginia where it's twenty-five. So that was pretty neat. Uh, there were a lot of tours. There were a lot of really good presentations. I did learn that the uh, Pacific Corps actually now has a meteorology department. And the fellow who got hired three years ago um, ha- now has a staff of five or six people, and they analyze any storm that's coming in. They analyze it to what the wind's gonna do, and they know what lines to shut down. So that's, that was pretty neat to to hear about. Um, on the matter of the property committee, it's been a couple of years since we had one appointed. Um, and I think it would be a good idea to have a council committee, this property committee, especially since we're talking about placement of tiny houses that can get real familiar with the property the city owns. And I've heard one place that we looked at for homeless camping, I had heard oh, maybe that can be in a a location for apartments. Uh, but again, it's on Newmark and that scares, that's scary tra- uh, transportation situation, traffic situation. So I really think that it would be to everybody's benefit if there was a property committee to help our staff with evaluations of these kinds of things. Okay, thanks.
Councillor Hamilton?
Uh, I also attended the LLC uh, convention conference, conference and uh, toured the airport, which is a pretty big unit, and the mid-fire department they have there with their nine one one call center and fire department. Um, also uh, seeing all the other uh, cities and what's going on in the the projects of the year that were awarded. Um, all the other councillors and mayors you run into of that. Uh, it's just a great bunch of people, and it was a good time uh, meeting different people. Meeting other councillors and how things are done in their city. It was a really good experience. I enjoyed it. Uh, and I came back and went to the Ring of Fire party we had. It was actually a he had it going on, band on one side, band on the other, and doing it everywhere. And it was a good time. So if you missed it, you missed out.
Good. Um, yeah, the League of Oregon Cities meeting. So I currently, I serve on the board and um, put my name in the hat for vice president of the league that would start in um, twenty twenty-four, January of twenty twenty-four. So I was voted in as vice president. And I really believe that being involved at that level, I watched what councillor um, informer mayor Tim Slater did. Um, being involved with that and how it's just another opportunity to have our voice from the South Coast be heard. So I was really happy to be um, voted into that position. And it is those networking opportunities um, are so important and to learn what the other ci- cities are doing. Um, and also at these events, we have more exposure to our congressional leaders. So um, when councillor Ron Wyden uh, walked into the room and he saw me, uh, he knew there was two things that I was going to talk to him about, but pretty right away. Um, and one of them was um, the the funding that we're anticipating to help out with um, uh, some affordable housing projects that we have uh, we're hoping to get some earmarks from. And so I checked in with him about that. We talked about, he had questions about wind energy. Um, and that's a large conversation that we're having here on the coast. And um, also, um, he is full in um, supporting the project uh, for the container facility. Um, so he always brings up those things. So I feel confident that the more exposure that we can have with them about the issues that we're facing here on the coast is a good thing. Um, so continue to work for North Bend and all of the, you know, our rural areas to be heard. Um, I want to um, also just say thank you to all the staff who have the talks of the towns and the, all these events that we have are so important. And I have a commitment to the finance director because I know it's got to hurt your heart a little bit when there's four hundred people that show up at the fire station. And there was zero people that came to the talk about the finance. So I am going to commit to you that I'm going to share the video once a month, and maybe we'll just gain some followers because I know that it's not as exciting and you didn't give out hot dogs, but this is an important issues about how our city is funded um, and where your tax dollars go. So I will continue to spread the word um, about all of that information that you have. And I know that it's art, it's out there. Um, I just want to give you some airtime there because you're welcome. Provide hot dogs. You've got hot dogs with a budget discussion. We'll, we'll work on that for next time. But again, like truly, thank you. Um, I think that those, these, you know, the fun things in the community are those are, those are also important. And those are the things that often people come up and they want to talk to us about is like, when is this coming back and when is that happening? Um, so to hear people talk about, they had to choose which activities that they were going to, um, because there were so many going on is a really good thing. So I appreciate all of that. Um, I also do want to let um, everybody know that I had heard the word that um, Dr. Kaiser, who was um, very instrumental in um, his uh, has passed away. And I wanted to send my condolences to his family. Um, there was, his family has a really interesting history and came over the Oregon Trail in the eighteen forties. Um, many doctors in the family was instrumental in the uh, the old uh, hot hospital in the North Bend Medical Center. So that family has a lot of history, and we appreciate all the things that they have done for North Bend. So other than that, I'll see you all at homecoming. Okay. So we'll go ahead, and I don't believe we had any items for other business. I'm going to make eye contact with our public works director. No, no other, no items of other business. And then um, will we be adjourning this meeting and moving to the URA meeting? That's what we'll go ahead and do. Okay. So we'll go ahead, and it's very quick, so we can run right into it. We'll go ahead and do North Bend City Council regular session agenda adjourned. And now, should I wait? Pause?
Go ahead.
Okay, I will go ahead and welcome to the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency meeting agenda for Tuesday, November twenty fourth at eight oh six PM here in the council chambers. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order and um, begin with public comment. Is there any public comment tonight for the URA meeting?
There's not.
Okay, then I will go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the URA minutes from October tenth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the URA minutes, October tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Councillor Schultz had a first.
Second.
Second from councillor Nordoff. Any discussion? All in favor of the approval of the URA minutes for October tenth, twenty twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four is the redevelopment assistant grant for North Forty Company LLC. Is there a motion from the council? Or sorry, a motion from the URA. Um, number four redevelopment assistance grants. Is there a motion? And there's a suggested motion on page two of your packet?
I'm going to approve the redevelopment assistance grant for North Forty Beer Company now to exceed uh, twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, I heard a first from councillor Schultz, a second from councillor Gaul. Any discussion? Right. All in favor of approval of the redevelopment assistance grant for North Forty Beer Company LLC not to exceed twenty-four thousand, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five is the intergovernmental agreement between the city of North Bend and North Bend Urban Renewal Agency. Is there a motion?
I'm making motion to adopt the interg- intergovernmental agreement between the city of North Bend and the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency.
Hey, first from councillor Hamilton, a second from um, councillor Gaul. Any discussion? All right, then, um, all in favor of the city, let's see, did we say city council? Or do I say all in favor of the approval?
Yeah.
Yeah, all in favor of the approval of the proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city of North Bend and North Bend Urban Renewal Agency to provide, no, is that it? Um, administrative services, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That was five. Number six is the executive director report.
Thank you. We have um, a new uh, business downtown, Brighter Smiles, and it's open. Um, Brighter Smiles Tooth Gyms and Whiting LLC has set up shop inside uh, Ink Addicts Tattoo at twenty forty-eight Sherman Avenue. And so if you're looking for a quick smile upgrade or makeover, uh, you can book your whitening session, bless you uh, immediately. Um, you can drop in anytime between Tuesday and Saturday, between the hours of ten and five to personalize your smile. My mind.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, they were there. They were there. But um, I told him, I said, you're not serving red wine, are you?
Uh, yeah.
But the tooth, my friend wants to do the tooth jam.
Yeah.
The tooth jam?
Yeah, you can put
Okay. Okay.
For once.
Forever.
Anything else?